Called this Board of Supervisors work session for July 27, 2023 to order. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you. Before we start our agenda, we have a couple of quick items that we need to take care of in closed session. I think Mr. Steers has the motions for that.
Actually, I do, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Son. Mr. Chairman, I move to go in closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, point seven of the Code of Virginia for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable litigation involving the enforcement of a zoning violation on property owned by Journey Christian Fellowship, and where such consultation or briefing in a open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigation posture of the public body. Mr. Chairman, I move to go in closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, dash seven of the Code of Virginia for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the Board of Supervisors regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel involving the security of the county's computer network system.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
We'll be back shortly.
We are here today to just talk about housing. Um, which I know. In the, I was here last early June to discuss the Community Health Improvement Plan, which was uh recently published and one of our priorities was housing. And I've been working really closely with Ms. Shayna Abdu. And uh we have a housing task force kind of established as a result of that task of the improvement plan. And today we are going to discuss a potential proposal of re-establishing a housing advisory committee uh through a charter. Um, and we just want to real briefly talk about kind of the housing statistics that we have found throughout the process, kind of backing up why housing is really important to establish a committee for. So the community voted that affordable and safe housing is the third most important health priority to address in the next five years. And there is strong and growing evidence-based linked linking stable and affordable housing to health. So on our fact sheet, we talk about how majority of New Kent residents own their homes. So ninety percent, that's pretty high compared to Virginia and the United States. And that's linked to more stable housing and more tightly knit communities. Some of these won't be a surprise to you, but uh New Kent's median housing value is higher than Virginia's or US, so houses here are very valuable. Monthly owner costs are similar to state median, so people are spending roughly fif- fifteen hundred on housing costs. And housing units have grown nearly three times faster than the state average. Once again, probably not very surprising, but the housing has grown significantly. About twenty-three percent since two thousand and twelve. And lastly, we want to touch on how more than half of the New Kent renters are cost burdened. So cost burden is defined by spending thirty percent or more of your household income on rental costs. So more than half of New Kentians spend uh more than thirty percent of their income on rental costs. And also about one-third of renters are severely cost burdened, where they spend more than half of their income on rental costs. When a majority of the paycheck goes to your rent, it's hard to afford doctor visits, healthy food, utility bills, and other necessary expenses. And lastly, I just want for some background or context, who's living in New Kent? Uh median age is about forty-three, about forty-four years old. Um, there's some demographics, it's a breakdown of race and ethnicity. And I'll let Shayna take over as far as anyone else?
Yes. Good morning. Um, I'm Shayna Abdu. I am the New Kent, oh, I work for New Kent County Department of Social Services. And I'm the Community Resource Coordinator. So um I started working there about June of last year and within this first year, um I just hit the ground running and housing is my baby. Uh, so one thing we've identified is that we do have an aging population here in New Kent County. We do have a lot of seniors. We love on our seniors, but our seniors aren't ha- they're struggling. They're having some issues. We also have a veteran population, about ten point eight percent of the population are veterans in New Kent County. And that's great because I myself am a veteran. I just retired last year. I served twenty years in the United States Army. Go Army. Um, so I'm a proud veteran and I'm proud to call New Kent my home. So me being the Community Resource Coordinator, I'm in a unique position because I get to meet the citizens, the people here in New Kent. And let me just say, I love the people here in New Kent and I'm very animated, so just bear with me. But it's good for the morning time. I'll keep you awake. So um but one of the things being uh in the position that I am, I'm in as the Community Resource Coordinator, I'm inundated with issues, with people issues, or people's needs rather, let's say needs. Uh, and so if you look at this chart where it says the reported housing issues among New Kent County Department of Social Services clients. Now this is just a small snapshot of data that was collected from August of two thousand and twenty to January of two thousand and twenty-three. So it's not even the full time I've been there and it still doesn't even cover most of this year. And out of the people who uh we captured this data from, or the people that we had to serve or that I served in my position, eighteen percent of them needed rental assistance. So what rental assistance looks like is um I need a place to stay. I can't stay here. And we see that a lot of times with multi-generational families, you know, mother, father here, kids here with their kids. And so the tension, the issues, they're looking for a place to stay. The problem becomes, or the problem comes into play where the kids, they go to school here in New Kent. They have friends here. They have a life here. And so now you have people who are like, can you find me someplace to live in New Kent? I don't have any places to live in New Kent. So that's been an ongoing issue. And then we also talk about uh people who are currently experiencing tenant landlord issues. That honestly is another big issue here in New Kent. See, the thing is, New Kent's great. It's wonderful, but a lot of these silent issues in some positions and certain, you know, certain areas, you don't see them. But in the position I sit in, I get to see and interact with people who are experiencing a lot of these things. So tenant landlord issues is another big one. And that's a big one that ties to health and safety because there are a lot of people living in unsafe housing conditions. But they are fearful of reporting them because if they get put out by the landlord, where are they gonna go? So when you have roots planted here, when you have built a life here in this great county of New Kent, you don't want to leave that. So a lot of people suffer through a lot of things and it also has led to some health issues, which we'll kind of discuss later on. We have had a lot of people evicted um from last summer till January. I don't want to say a lot, but more than I think people understand. And when people are evicted, they come to us. They say, hey, how can, do you have any place for me to go? Can you help put us in a hotel for a period of time? So what we do do is we use emergency services and we could try to help, but that's only a two hundred and fifty dollar limit. So I may be able to put someone in a hotel for a weekend, but then when Monday comes around, I have no resources for them. Another thing is there, last summer, we experienced a rise, well, a rise for me because I didn't know it existed either. But uh we experienced a significant number of people who were sleeping in their vehicles. Um, and then we have the couch surfers as well. So homelessness is another issue. And then they call us, they call me constantly, do you have a place for me to go? Do you have a place for me to go? The thing is, New Kent County is so great to where people don't want to go to Richmond. They don't want to go to Williamsburg. They want to stay right here and I get it. So the, the problem that I face a lot of times is I don't have resources to say, hey, call this person, call that person, or this is available here. So because I don't have any housing resources, I have nowhere to put them. Which leads us to what we're asking. We're asking to start a housing advisory committee. So we know um just a little bit like Emily was saying. The housing, the affordable and safe housing work group was a work group that was established from the CHIP. Because the CHIP, um you know, housing was an issue, so we established a work group. I took lead of that. Mr. Brian Michaelitis, Mr. Mark Heneman, Kate Hale, and Karen Mortensen are also members on this housing work group. So we had to dig deep, identify issues, um identify how we could solve these issues, come up with these strategies as we did through the CHIP and uh the CHIP process. So it led us to identify, because we don't have a dedicated person for housing here in New Kent County, um maybe we could, and Emily did a lot of great digging and found out along with Mr. Hathaway, he let us know that there wasn't a a committee a few years ago, I want to say back in two thousand and nine or so, um that focused on affordable housing. Well, we know the affordable slash workforce housing, that's a whole different arena. That's gonna take some work and some, you know, talk and some of, a lot of other things. But what we want to focus on with this housing advisory committee is safety. Because safety is something that we all can ensure that our neighbors and our other community members, that they can live in safe housing, right? So as we talked about that um older population, one of the things I've noticed in my position, I'm sorry, I talk a lot. But one of the things I noticed in my position is that they're on a fixed income. If they're getting social security, eight, nine hundred dollars a month. And they're not in the best health or don't have the resources to make the necessary repairs that they need for their homes to have a decent quality of life and to be in safe conditions. So we have some seniors with, they don't have access to certain uh entryways or exitways in their homes. We have seniors with leaky roofs, with floor, floors that are falling apart and they have some issues there. Their homes are not weatherized. They have siding issues and things like that. So again, what I've been doing in this position is identifying resources that we could use, we can tap into to help our seniors. However, there is definitely more that we can do. With this committee, one example could be for the committee to get with like Habitat for Humanities. With this committee, one example could be for the committee to get with like Habitat for Humanities. They do a thing called a Housing Blitz, where they can go in and make some repairs and things like that. It takes some negotiating. It takes some work and coordinating. It is too much for me and my position to do, and since we don't have a dedicated housing person, this housing advisory committee would be the, a, a great committee or group of people to help, uh, advocate for people and to help try to coordinate and get some of these things done. There's other things, like I was talking about with the landlord issues. Another thing that we could do is, uh, our neighbors to the east, James City County, they have what's called a landlord portal. New Kent can create something like that, where landlords can access information on what's legal, what's not legal, and how to appropriately evict someone and do certain things so that they have the resources they need. Tenants can also access information to make sure that they're in safe conditions. And if they have any issues with their landlords, they have the resources they need. And then it also can serve as a way for us to capture information to find out, you know, who's renting in the county. And then if there's anything available and someone in the county wants to stay in the county, they could come to that portal or see what's available and find something else in the county. Because one thing I, it's sad for me to see is people who love being here, who created families and, and, and friends and, and resources here, and they have to leave because there's nowhere for them to go. So again, I'm sorry I talk a lot, but housing, again, is my passion. This is my baby. And just the housing advisory committee would be a great group to, um, to help resolve some of these silent, unknown issues that are going on in New Kent, in this great, amazing county that we just don't see. But that I see all the time, every day. Okay, that's my spiel. I'm sorry I talk a lot, y'all. Do y'all have any questions of us?
So, uh, excuse me, m- m- Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I've prepared a motion, but I would ask that we strike the term affordable and, uh, from hearing the conversation and discussion, um, that the ask is that we charter a housing advisory committee.
Does anybody else have any questions? I, I think it's a great idea.
It, it's a great idea. My question is, I'm sure there's gonna be funding needed somewhere down the road, so where's the funding gonna come from?
Well, I, I think one of the tasks of the Housing Advisory Committee is to look at available funding sources. There's a lot of sources outside of county local funds that could be tapped into.
Thank you.
I think it's, uh, again, I think it's a great idea, and I don't think any of our board members will have a problem finding somebody to represent each district. I think that's a great idea. I've already got somebody in mind, but I'll keep it to myself for right now. But, um, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman? I move to direct the county administrator to draft a charter for the creation of a housing advisory committee to study the current status of, of housing in the county and develop recommendations that may address any issue that are identified.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
You too.
Next on our agenda, the New Kent County Olivet Church Road Communication Tower Maintenance Authorization. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Back in twen- two thousand and fifteen, the county assumed ownership of a tower from, of a communications tower from Intellos, who had recently, um, purchased numerous Sprint Towers. Towers that were constructed by Sprint. This particular tower was constructed in the early to mid nineties, um, by Sprint, and it was later sold to Intellos. The Te- Intellos decided that they did not have a need for the tower, and they approached the county about, uh, taking the tower over or they were gonna demolish it. As you may recall, around two thousand and fifteen, we were considering a wireless broadband option to provide internet service to county residents. Um, so therefore, we thought it would be best if we assumed ownership of the tower in case we needed it for, for broadband. Um, even though that's not the case now, we don't need it for broadband. A couple of months ago, you approved a lease, um, with the state, I believe, um, to put some weather equipment on, on that, that tower. We've recently had J and G Contracting Company do an inspection of that tower. And, you know, we found that for a tower that's about thirty years old, it's in decent shape. Um, it's in sound structural shape, um, but there is some maintenance that is, is needed. And, and that maintenance totals thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. A big portion of that cost is the replacement of the lighting system on that tower. The tower currently has an outdated system, um, that we're proposing to replace with a newer LED lighting system, um, on that tower that has better sensors. It shines brighter and bulbs and equipment lasts longer. We also found some other items, uh, i- issues, minor issues with the tower. Uh, the foundation, there was some cracking and chipping of the grout, uh, ne- near the bottom of the tower where we're, um, which is normal for a thirty-year-old tower. Um, and we're proposing for that to be repaired. And we also found numerous bolts, um, that were either missing or needed tightening, um, which is also normal as weather and swaying of the tower, those, they loosen up. Um, so the tower's in good shape. We're recommending that we continue to own this tower and keep this tower. Uh, but we are recommending that this maintenance be performed. And also, you know, since we've retained ownership in two thousand and fifteen, uh, there's been no maintenance of the tower. We've done visual inspections, um, to ensure that the lighting system is, is operable, and it is. Uh, but the issue is, and we've been advised by, um, our contractor, if it goes down and parts need replacing, we will have a very difficult time of finding parts for that, that system. So, uh, you have a motion, a draft motion and request before you to appropriate, uh, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And I'm gonna change the motion slightly after speaking with our finance department. Instead of appropriating that from capital fund balance, I would ask that we appropriate it from the Colonial Downs Reserve Capital Fund Balance.
Have we had any interest from any of the wireless carriers to be on that tower?
Not, not, not at this point. Um, but there was a recent community meeting, uh, where we actually met someone that's in charge of, uh, the siding of wireless equipment for Verizon. And we are having discussions with them to see if that's a need for them. I'm not sure if it will be because Verizon has a nearby tower, um, behind the former Blues Coffee Shop. That's a Verizon tower. Um, so there may not be a need, but with 5G becoming on board, uh, we know that they're gonna need a lot more towers. So I do think that there's gonna be some opportunities there with 5G.
I think I know some people in that area that would appreciate some more better service from Verizon close by. All right, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Chairman, there are no further questions. I move to appropriate thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars from the Colonial Downs Reserve Capital Fund uh, for repairs to the county's Olivet Church Road Communications Tower.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Is that mic still on there?
No.
No? All right. I saw the red light. I think the next agenda item's been taken off. Is that correct? All right. Uh, item number four, historical marker replacement project. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I received a request from the Historic Society and the Historical, um, uh, Commission. For the replacement of two historical mark, for the relocation of two historical markers. Um, they've been undertaking a, what I think is a neat project. Um, the, both groups have been doing a assessment of all of the historical markers located throughout the county. And they've identified, uh, various markers that were, um, in a condition that needed ex- needs extensive repair, mainly painting, repainting. Um, some of the markers were overgrown, not accessible anymore. And they've been working with VDOT and the Department of Historic Resources to address those markers. Two of the markers, um, and it's the Fort James Marker and the Tyrese Plantation Marker, uh, which are located down in Lenexa, near Liberty Baptist Church. They've identified those markers as not being accessible, and there's a need to relocate those markers. They've al- already have relocated, I believe, three markers right in front of Liberty Baptist Church. And VDOT, um, agreed to establish a gravel, um, I guess, a, a pull-off area, um, so that they can be addressed. The two markers I just mentioned, the Historic Commission would like to locate those markers, uh, near Fire Station Four. Not in front of where we're building, but on the other side of Waterside Drive. There's a very wide right-of-way there, so it appears that the pull-off can be constructed within the VDOT right-of-way. So we won't have to dedicate any easements or anything like that. But VDOT has informed us that they do not have a budget, uh, for the establishment of a drive area to, so vehicles can, can, can pull off of Route sixty. That would have to be the, uh, responsibility of the county. But VDOT would relocate the markers, um, once that, that was completed. I anticipate the cost, um, to establish the, the, the pull-off would be less than ten thousand dollars, and, and that's including the engineering and permitting process with VDOT. We would have to get a land use, apply for a land use permit, uh, through VDOT. We would have to hire an engineer and design, uh, that area, um, and submit that to VDOT for, for their approval. So there will be some costs associated with, on, on our behalf. And the ask today is, really, no action is required at this time, but if this is something that you'd like for me to pursue, then I will start getting quotes from engineers, uh, to develop the plans. And the cost estimate with that plan for the actual construction. So, um, seeking input from the board to see if this is, um, something that you would like me to pursue. And, you know, I think the history of, of those two markers is, is very interesting. Fort James was constructed by Thomas Roth, um, the son of Pocahontas and John Roth. And we believe the location is, the original location was near the Chickamen River, uh, right where, um, the colonies is, is located. And the other marker, Tyrese Plantation, that significance was during the, the Revolutionary War where, um, there was actually, that plantation was used as a headquarters to observe and follow, shadow, uh, some of the, the, the British troops that were in Colonial Williamsburg at the time, so.
Do you think they called it Colonial Williamsburg back then?
I doubt they called it that back then.
Don't we own that land where the markers would be? Didn't we get that little corner as part of the purchase?
We, 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 we do own that, that land, um, but actually the right-of-way is so wide there. I believe the pull-off can be constructed within the right-of-way, and we have additional land. For some reason, the right-of-way narrows at Waterside Drive and then Eastwood. But before you get to Ner- uh, Waterside Drive, it's a very wide right-of-way.
Do you think, I know that VDOT says they don't have any budget for these things, and, and, you know, that seems to be the problem with this whole program, is nobody actually has a budget for it. Do you think it, and maybe as a cost sharing, that VDOT would do the engineering? I mean, they have engineers capable of doing that. The one that they did in front of Liberty Baptist, there wasn't any engineering. They just dumped gravel and spread it, so that's all they're gonna do here. Do you think we could get VDOT to comp the engineering aspect of it? Or are they gonna be permitting their own engineering, which they do sometimes?
I could definitely have a conversation with VDOT. I mean, like you said, I mean, they have engineers on staff, and this would be very simple for them to do. You know, their first response was, we don't have a budget, but I can definitely elevate that conversation and talk with more.
I think it'd be worth having a conversation, asking them, we're gonna take on, if, if we decide to do this, take on the expense of providing the materials and work, so, um, I think it'd be worth asking VDOT if they would take on the engineering aspect of it. Because really, there's not much to what we're talking about here. And I think it is good that, you know, these markers, if we're gonna have them out there, that people can actually pull off the road and take a look at them without risking life and limb, so. Yeah, I think it's, the ones that were moved in front of Liberty Baptist are definitely more accessible.
Yes.
And this would definitely make it easier to see these as well.
So is everybody willing to move forward with this for Mr. Hathaway to follow through?
Do we want to vote on it now, or do we want to wait until we hear from VDOT?
Well, I, I, I can definitely have another conversation with, with VDOT. Um, I have spoken with staff from VDOT, but I've not spoken with Mr. Wynn about that. So I could definitely go to him. Yeah, and I can report back to you.
Okay. Well, we'll wait then. Next on the agenda is any other business? Mr. Hathaway, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
I'm sorry. I have one brief thing. I, I don't want to pass this opportunity, while the cameras are, are rolling, to announce that on July second, uh, the county will be celebrating its first Independence Day event. We're excited about it. It's in the, um, high school campus area, uh, from seven to ten o'clock. Fireworks, um, scheduled to begin around nine fifteen. So, um, we're excited about this first event, um, and, and we hope that the residents are able to come out and, and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Anybody else? Anything new? Exciting? A motion? Anybody have a motion?
Motion for German.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page? Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? And Mr. Tiller?